I'm good.
Twelve-year-old asthmatic.
Good evening. For the call, the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 18th, 2022, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session at 6:00. Two items were discussed. The first was approving executive session minutes for May 3rd. A vote was taken. We did approve them. We have not approved to release them yet. Second was to discuss collective bargaining for all town unions. If the chair determines an open session would have a detrimental effect, no votes were taken. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment and announcement?
Good evening. I'm Ginny Hewitt, the library director, and I just wanted to make a couple announcements. The first is that the library is once again offering curbside pickup for community members who might be immune compromised or who prefer not, just to limit their time in the public spaces during the current Omicron surge. So here's how it works. When a patron gets a notice that they have an item on hold and it's ready to pick up, they simply call us 508-430-7562 and tell us they'll pick it up through curbside service. The following morning, a circulation staff member will bag up all the items for curbside and place them out on the shelves outside of our entrance on the parking lot side of the building and where it was last year. And the bag will be labeled in nice big letters so people won't have any hard time finding their items. Pickups will be available by 10:00 a.m. and they'll be outside for the day. So there's no window of time like there was last year. The volume was so heavy last year that you might have been told like a 1:00 to 2:30 window. None of that. It's just going to be out there for the whole day. So no assigned time. They can come by anytime. So I just want to be clear about a couple of things. And the first is that we're not shutting down library operations. Like I've heard people say when they hear curbside, they think like it's curbside only. No, no, the library is still open. This is just an addition to our normal inside services. And the second thing is I want people to know that this isn't an on-demand service. So unfortunately, logistics prevent us from providing, you know, inside services and an on-demand pickup. So when you call us to tell us you're picking up at curbside, no one's running to the shelves and getting your items and taking it out to you. It's a next-day service. So that should help take care of, you know, we're planning to do this through January and February until this surge really starts to die down. The second thing I wanted to mention is something you all probably know, but our patrons might not, is that everything that you check out at the library, any subjects you expressed interest in or any reference questions you ask, all of your intellectual pursuits is what the law says, are confidential. So think of the library like Las Vegas. What happens here stays here. It's a basic tenet of our professional ethics, and so sometimes we forget to tell people that that's the way it is. But it's not just based on our professional ethics. It's Mass General Law protects anything that you do at the library, any of your intellectual pursuits. So you can feel safe using the library, knowing that your confidentiality is valued and protected. But since it's a small community, many people naturally feel uncomfortable picking up a book on a sensitive topic and taking it to the desk and checking it out. So a few years ago, we started the Confidential Corner. It's on the mezzanine between the first and the second floor. And those books are books on anxiety, depression, divorce, suicide, estrangement from family members, for people questioning sexual orientation or gender identity, for dealing with death and loss, drug abuse, alcoholism, and a lot of topics like this. So those books may be borrowed without needing to be checked out, and the patron may keep them as long as they find them useful. We purchased the books for the Confidential Corner using donated funds in our gift account, so it's not town funds, because we know we may not get these items back. But that's okay. This collection's serving the greater good in the community by helping our residents deal with some tough challenges in their lives. The holidays are always a difficult time and stressful, and more so this year with the pandemic, with in-person gatherings and travel being more limited. The current Omicron surge is going on, and that's increased anxiety and isolation. And here in Harwich, we have the seasonal migration of residents to warmer climates that leave some of our neighborhoods or some of the groups you might belong to a little less populated, and that can be kind of depressing. So it seemed like a good time to remind people about the Confidential Corner exists. People should feel free to borrow any of the books that might be of interest or helpful to them. And I'd also encourage people to speak to the reference librarian if you have particular concerns or you're looking for resources or referral to organizations that can assist you. We're happy to help. And again, your transactions are confidential. And finally, on a lighter note, I wanted to mention a new resource at the library. You're probably all aware that online selling has really taken off during the pandemic. Many of our community members have gotten into it, selling clothing and other items, you know, just for something to do as a hobby, and others are making a little bit of extra income that way. So in order to help out people that are dabbling in this and also people that are serious but maybe rookies at it, we now have a small photo studio that community members can use to improve the quality of their listings and hopefully then their sales. So we have a light box, which is great for taking photos of small items, a mannequin, and, you know, a nice tripod that will attach to your camera or a smartphone. So we're hoping that if this really takes off like we think it will, we'll take suggestions from patrons for other items that we could purchase to make it even better. Right now, we're offering introductory sessions that people can sign up for just to get an overview of how the things work or the best way to do things. And then after that, they can use that studio, reserve it, to use it independently. I say studio, it sounds big. It's a little mobile box and, you know, a few pieces of equipment that right now, you know, we'll be using in our meeting room when other events aren't taking place. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is going to be an announcement on behalf of our water and wastewater superintendent, as well as me as administrator, on behalf of GHD. So as you all recall, at our special town meeting in October of 2021, the town meeting approved funds and process for the town to begin the revisions of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. To that end, Dan Pelletier, working with Russ Kleecamp and his team at GHD, have identified at least two upcoming public input sessions. The information I'm going to read right now will be added to our website tomorrow, January 19th. There'll be a reminder in the board's packet next Monday, the 24th. And what they're looking to do is first, the purpose for the public input session, input session, is to receive input from residents and stakeholders on suggested revisions, edits, and improvements to the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, or CWMP. So what they're looking to do to start is the first one will be Thursday, January 27th this month, and it is meant to be completely remote. It's by go-to meeting, and it will begin at 6:00 p.m. The second session, to try and accommodate folks, is an in-person, in-person session for Saturday, January 29th, and that's scheduled at 9:00 a.m. in the Harwich Community Center multipurpose room. So the town and GHD would welcome residents and stakeholders to participate in one or all of these sessions to provide comments on revisions to the CWMP. Additionally, when we advertise on the website on January 19th, there is email contact information for Russ Kleecamp, who's the project manager at GHD, and Anastasia Radenko, who is also a project manager, their email addresses. And Russ has also offered a cell phone number for anyone with any questions or wishing to offer their comments directly to Russ. They can call him as well. So again, we're trying to begin the process of public input sessions for the CWMP and starting out on January 27th remote, January 29th in person. And they're contemplating a third session. I will tell you that Russ tells us that they want to finalize the public input process by middle of February so that they can start getting information back to the town. So this is the first time you'll hear it. It won't be the last time. And Mr. Chairman, I believe on your meeting next Monday, the 24th, you may have the superintendent present to talk about this and some other matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, will you email that to the board?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing, discussion and possible vote to approve the transfer of a seasonal on-premise all-alcohol liquor license from 30 Earl Road LLC, DBA The Commodore Inn to Pelham on Earl Operating LLC, DBA Pelham on Earl, 30 Earl Street, West Harwich. Mary, will you read the public notice to go into the public hearing?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Harwich Board of Selectmen, application for transfer of liquor license. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that application has been made to this board for a transfer of the seasonal on-premise all-alcohol beverages license now held by 30 Earl Road LLC, DBA The Commodore Inn, 30 Earl Road, West Harwich, Mass., John Foley Manager, to Pelham on Earl Operating LLC, DBA Pelham on Earl, 30 Earl Road, West Harwich, Mass., John McCarthy Manager, on the following described premises located at 30 Earl Road, West Harwich, Mass. 868 square feet of dining area, 4,800 square feet of outdoor bar area, four entrances and four exits. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on the application on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass., 02645. Board of Selectmen, Local Licensing Authority in the Cape Cod Times, December 27th, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening. May I introduce yourselves for the record? And when you're speaking, you're welcome to pull your mask down.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouthport. And seated with me is John McCarthy, who is the proposed manager of the transferred liquor license, as well as a principal in Pelham on Earl. The application, first of all, just to go through the mechanics, is complete and I believe accurate. Mr. McCarthy is a U.S. citizen, age over 21 slightly, has no criminal record, and Mr. McCarthy intends to maintain the hours for this license as the existing license has, which lists on the license itself 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. weekdays, which includes Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sundays and holidays. The current license was held by 30 Earl Road LLC, doing business as The Commodore Inn at 30 Earl Street. Property has been and will continue to be operated as a motel with 27 rooms, manager's quarters, a kitchen, dining room, and an outdoor pool. The, Mr. McCarthy's experience is working in the motel industry, basically as a principal of Pelham House in Dennis. If you haven't been to it, you understand there's a new location. It's the old Pelham House, has become the new Pelham House. It's a beautiful, beautiful thing. Not only that property, but there are other properties at the Pelham House has purchased and are redeveloping in other towns. This is the first time the Pelham House is in Harwich. But if you've seen that property, you understand the level of excellence that that brand brings, not only to Dennis but to the Cape. It's just a beautiful property. It's maintained well, and Mr. McCarthy is a big part of that. He has a vast amount of experience working at the Pelham House, back to when his dad owned it back in the '90s and all the way up until right now. So customer service, guest experience are really their motto. I'm going to ask John if he could say a few words about the property, his experience a little bit, maybe what they're going to do in the future, so you can understand what's going to happen over on Earl Road.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having us and me. My name is John McCarthy, live in Brewster, Mass. I grew up coming to the Cape and Dennisport every summer with my parents. My grandmother had a house in Dennisport. My dad actually grew up, again, coming, his father had a house in Dennisport. He was part of a restaurant called Bishop's Terrace in Harwich, back in the day that my dad's family owned, and he actually was a cook there for many, many years. So my dad dated back to Harwich in that area. In 1997, my dad decided to purchase the Pelham House and moved from the North Shore where I grew up, and I was in college. So graduated college in 2000 after spending three summers working with him at the Pelham. And in 2000, I ended up coming right to the Cape and helping him manage the Pelham, which ended up being for the next 17 or 18 years of his life, when he passed away just about three years ago, this December, this past December that just passed. A few months after he passed away, some investors that he knew well ended up coming kind of into my life, and we ended up making a partnership. And they believed in me as kind of a managing partner to run the Pelham House and to start this whole process. So I have over 25, 30 years of experience at the Pelham House and some other areas. And I love every minute of what I do over at the Pelham and the hospitality business. We have a growing team. We've been able to now, between all of our properties now, we expect that this summer we could be eight to two to 250 employees. I started with my dad for 20 years of 20 employees. So to go from 20 to 200 in about two years, two and a half years, is pretty amazing. And I love, as I said, just loving every minute of it. When the Commodore came up as an opportunity, we saw where it was in the middle, obviously in the middle of a beautiful Harwich neighborhood in Harwich, where who wouldn't want to have the opportunity to potentially have a business there? And then it was in great condition and had a great reputation. So we decided that it would be a great property to add to the Pelham, to the Pelham Hospitality Group, and we move forward with it. Currently, I think our thought is for this year, we just want to run it as is. There's a small kitchen in there. I'm not sure if you all know or not, but there is a small kitchen, and there used to be a restaurant, I think, I forget what it was called, Raspberry's maybe? But there was a kitchen in there with a small restaurant, and then 27 units. There was a few, I think, some outdoor seating, a little outdoor seating and then the indoor seating. We're not looking to expand on any of that. We want to run it as is for a year. There are some things that throughout this year, we might want to bring to the town to try to improve the food and beverage portion of things, because the kitchen needs some updating, in my opinion. So really excited about some of those opportunities. We realize, I've been through a lot with the growth of the Pelham, so I realize the partnership that we have to form with Harwich and the area, like the departments that we're going to have to go through to try to make this happen and try to maybe improve the kitchen and give an advanced food and beverage product rather than what we can probably do with it now. But we're just excited to have this opportunity to be in Harwich, to be at a beautiful place. We want the town to be proud of us. We want the neighbors to be proud. I can't wait to meet a lot of the neighbors. With the Pelham House project, I was really, right from the start, I encouraged all of our neighbors to come over. I wanted to tour them and show them and tell them about like my vision and my dream and like what we're thinking about doing. So I can't wait to invite anybody who's in a budding neighbor or anyone else in Harwich to come over and take a look. We've already had some town office people come over and we've showed them around a little bit. So just really excited and can't wait to get going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not much more than I had. There's a lot of energy and excitement there. So we would just like to ask the board for your consideration tonight, and hopefully you can get a vote to have this transfer start, and then we can go to the next step up in Boston. So thank you very much. If you have questions, we'll try to answer them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the, go ahead, Joe?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you open up for the public, I just want to first confirm what Attorney Tardif had said, that staff had reviewed the application. Everything is in pristine order. Ms. Delaney and I reviewed that several times with both John and Attorney Tardif, and we appreciate their efforts on that. They also provided blowups of some of the schematics and the plans, if the board members wanted to see that in bigger detail. And to what John was saying earlier, he reached out to the town proactively. We did a site visit with administration and every department and community development while they were considering things for this application. And so Mr. McCarthy's now told you that they may do things in the future, but they've been very proactive in reaching out to the town and been very engaged with all of our departments. So the application you have in front of you does not have any negative commentary from the town.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public online? Go ahead, Mike.
Mark Keller here, West Harwich. John, I've seen you've done a great job at the Pelham House. I just have a question for you. I've noticed at the C Street lot, do you have to use that public parking? And if you do, do you imagine you'll use the public beach parking if your establishment reaches a successful level?
We, right now, in Dennis, we have to, we have the valet park. That was part of our special permit. We obviously over there have a 250-seat wedding venue as well as a rooftop restaurant. The expectation here would be that we would not plan on parking any cars at that public beach. We're not looking to advance this to something other than hopefully something that all of our guests that are staying there will love the food and beverage product. And then we hear that it's a, that it's a nice walking area too, that people are walking to that beach down and back, and we're hoping that people will enjoy it that way. There is some pretty, there's a few extra spots at the property. So it's not every spot is taken for the hotel. So our expectation is that we would absolutely be able to cover it in the lot that's available to us.
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I just want to welcome John and his family to the town. I met with him briefly. We have some time coming up that we're going to get together as well. But I think his energy, you guys know me, John surpasses me some days. So his energy is very welcome to the town. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, Don.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Comments from the board? I'll start with Don. More questions?
Actually, just a comment. Had a store on Lower County Road. I'm very familiar with Pelham House through the years, and if you can do what you did there in Harwich, good luck. You'd be a great asset.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Mary?
I'll echo what Don said. I had the pleasure of an outstanding dinner on your rooftop, and the waitress was spectacular. And we were a family of eight with two kids and two allergy people.
Yes.
And she was fabulous.
That's great to hear.
Welcome to Harwich.
Thank you very much. I'm excited.
I'll echo that. I've had many great experiences over at both buildings, the rooftop and next door. So I look forward to you coming to Harwich.
Thank you. We do too.
I agree. You know, Comblor had a great reputation, and so it sounds like you're ready and enthusiastic about maintaining that.
We are.
You do need to find Dick and Florrie and steal their scone recipe, however.
Okay.
Because those were the best scones I've had at many places, and I miss them.
Well, we have a really great pastry chef at the Pelham House. She's a baker and pastry chef, so maybe we can find that and have her do it.
So I would just echo the comments of my colleagues and thank you for your cooperation and professionalism. The application, as Joe said, in the process, we wish that all of them would go that way. So would that?
Before motion, just when you get settled in?
Yeah.
Consider revisiting the Bishop's Terrace thing.
Okay. I love it. My dad and I did, we looked at that for a while. It's some love. It was a lot. It was a pretty great place, and my dad told me a lot of great stories about a lot of nights there. So, yeah, I wish we would.
Could I take a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the transfer of a seasonal on-premise all-alcohol liquor license from 30 Earl Road LLC, DBA The Commodore Inn, to Pelham on Earl Operating LLC, DBA Pelham on Earl, 30 Earl Street, West Harwich.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to hold E3.
E3.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda with five items. First is to approve a Caleb Chase request on the amount of $1,000. Second, to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $351.89. Third, to approve a grant to the Harwich Fire Department in the amount of $18,304.50 from the state for the firefighter safety equipment grant program. Fourth, to approve the town administrator's recommendation to grant permission of N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, for the purpose to install approximately 2,950 feet plus or minus of conduit and 13 new fiberglass pull boxes as necessary in order to upgrade infrastructure and enhance utility service for area residents. Plan number 5691729 dated October 18th, 2021. And fourth, to vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for two dates, January 4th, 2021, and January 11th, 2021.
Second.
Moved in second. To approve as read, I would just thank and congratulate the fire department for another grant and another saving to the town of Harwich. I think Chief LeBlanc's quote in the memo that we got, "The value of these grants is immeasurable," said the Harwich Fire Chief Dave LeBlanc. "With budgets being stretched thin, many of these upgrades would not be possible without the assistance of the state programs." Perfect quote, and really can't thank you enough. Every year, we seem to get grants through the fire department, so.
Could you just take a moment? We're blessed that we have some really talented people that are able to write these grants. We were eligible for up to 19,000, and we got just about 19,000. And this year, it became a competitive grant program. So last year, it was guarantee, or you were eligible up to a certain amount, and you would get it. This year, only 306 towns got grants. So we were able to fight for some money, and we got it. And we continue, we have two grants in the hopper with the feds again this year. So we're just going to continue down that path. And, you know, the way we've looked at it for a long time is it's money that we can put back into the general fund by not taking it from the general fund. So I really appreciate Tina Reagan, Firefighter Reagan, for her efforts, and Deputy Thornton, both done a great job getting this done.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Don, you want to talk about minutes for August 9th and make a motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just start by saying, the way it came out is as clear as mud, and I know that the discussion was kind of difficult to follow. So I'm going to try to clarify by adding, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes with the following addition on page two at the bottom, after it says he agrees Mr. Powers taking the lead. And that text would be, "However, Mr. Howell emphasized that as late as 1993, the church went to a planning board site plan review to build a fellowship hall, which required certain graves to be moved. The question of the town's ownership at that time was not raised by either the planning board or the cemetery commission. Furthermore, the Methodist Church properties are not locally owned. The conference is in Boston, and it still asserts ownership. Further, despite any town meeting action, there is no evidence of a taking on the part of the town." With that addition, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Don, could I just ask that you type that or give your written notes to Joe so staff can add that to the minutes?
Elementary school block print.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, next up is update on tax collections for unknown and miscellaneous properties. I'm going to allow for very limited discussion on this. My mistake. It's a complete document in the packet, but the title of it really only relates to owners unknown and owners unknown and tax collection. and owners unknown and tax collection, I mean miscellaneous parcels. So absorb the memo in the packet, and I am going to work with Carol for a much more complete topic over the next couple of weeks with Joe Powers. Any questions on what's there from the board? So the only question I had is in the packet, it said one owner's unknown was resolved. Can the board get the details on the one that was resolved?
Yes.
Please.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Discussion and possible vote on easement to Verizon for small cell phone, cell equipment to be installed on utility pole on town-owned property Harbor Road. Joe?
So Attorney Katie Klein from KP Law had been working with a representative from Cell Co. Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. This, this was the easement that related to the article at town meeting that was adopted. So counsel is recommending that the board execute the document.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Larry?
None.
Julie?
No, I don't have any.
Mary?
All set.
Don?
Nope.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the easement for Verizon for small cell equipment to be installed on a utility pole on town-owned property at Harbor Road.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
An aye and an aye. Next up, update by town administrator regarding signage and fee waiver for Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What you have, sorry. What you have in your packet is a document that relates to a request that the town had received from Mid-Cape Church Homes Incorporated. So as you know, they are a tenant of the town in the Albro House. And so they had submitted an application to Mr. Pucili, our building commissioner, seeking a signed permit, but also a waiver of the fee for the signed permit. And so when it was brought to my attention at administration, we did some background. So as you know, and you can see in the packet, there is a rental agreement between the town and that group, but the rental agreement is silent to the request. And so what I wanted to inform the board is, I would ask that the board direct staff to reach out to the tenant. There's a couple of other things that are going on. First of all, the sign permit request would come from the town, not the tenant. So there's no need to contemplate the waiver of the fee. But we do want to consider the cost of the sign itself, the installation out of it, and some of those other items. But what really came out of this is we have a rental agreement with that tenant. It doesn't comport presently with procurement laws because there's no end date. That's the bad news. The good news is, standard end date is three years, so this would come due the end of February of this year. So what we'd like to do and staff is work with the tenant to do probably a license agreement, which is the better way to go under the procurement law, finalize that, and also talk to them about their request for the sign.
Thank you, Joe. Questions from the board? Larry?
I have none, although I, a new sign there would be, would improve the looks.
No doubt.
Julie?
So if you're going to do that, the sign thing, are you going to do sort of permit, a sign board, so that if you have any other similar requests?
That's exactly the kind of thing that the town's considering. So it, it wouldn't just be because of this tenant's request. It'd be to update our signage to be more current. And I don't know the word I was going to use, I'm going to say malleable, but that's not the right word.
Uniform.
Thank you, exactly. Correct.
Yep.
Okay, that's a good idea. No, that's it.
Mary?
No, I'm all set.
Don?
Nope.
I guess my only question, Joe, is how do we come up with $300 a month in rent? As we're starting to revisit this, I think that the scrutiny that the cultural center's coming up against right now and looking at fees, this is a building certainly that I've been fairly vocal about that I think should be housing. And I know we have one department head in there, but we ought to take a look at what that $300 a month is actually covering versus what it's not, if we're going to do it for other town buildings. I know this hasn't come up from the Finance Committee yet, but maybe it should.
Thank you. To that point, that's why staff would be looking to have the conversations with the tenant. I believe we can accomplish everything that they've done over the last three years and what they hope to do in the future, but also do it in such a way that the town's not exposed to the complaints of unfair treatment and things like that. So again, this was precipitated on their request for a sign. So I've directed our building commissioner to hold off on that permit. And I do think the appropriate way to go is to have conversations, probably about a stronger way to do this partnership going forward.
Thank you, Joe. Update, old business update from the town administrator on the use of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, in my zeal and zest to get this memo to you folks, there are some errors in the memo. I'll address the memo, excuse me, the errors in a moment. But what I really wanted to do, building off of our conversation last week, which, you know, for me was remote, but still impactful, I wanted to put something in writing, present to the board this evening, but also let the general public, department heads, and everyone know the mindset that I'll be using, the philosophy that I'll be relying upon as we make recommendations, or as I make recommendations to you on behalf of folks requesting use of the ARPA funds that we presently have and any ARPA funds that we may receive from the county. And so to that end, what I've talked about is trying to be mindful that, and I, and I said it in your meeting last week, but just to commit it to writing, that given that there's going to be a significant amount of pressure, if you will, from multiple sources on those funds, I thought it prudent to approach with a philosophy of, these are funds that derive from the federal government in response to the pandemic, and they're meant to help municipal government, help people. And so what we're trying to do, when I say we, me and staff, administrative to start, but also in conversations with department heads, is try to identify uses for these funds that aren't found anywhere else. Meaning, our health director and I had a deep and meaningful conversation where the original request that was contemplated was to purchase test kits. It's a program through the county, and then to distribute those test kits to certain demographics in the town. My feeling at the time was that we may not want to do that, only because test kits were readily available in so many other circumstances. And I do think that that conversation was borne out by the recent announcement by President Biden, and the website for all Americans is available today, where every one of us would have an opportunity to request up to four kits for the town. Meaning, rather than try to compete with the rest of the county, to compete with the rest of the Commonwealth for test kits, maybe we can rely upon these funds to do something that is only available through government. Now, the error in my memo is talking about supporting, as I heard the board last week, and I agree with, supporting public health and other departments immediately. And so what I'm contemplating in the memo is, we, the town, have an opportunity to take the health inspector role, which is presently part-time, and expand that to full-time. Now, the error is that I couldn't use ARPA funds, and I couldn't recommend that you have us use ARPA funds for that expansion in the present fiscal year. And I think I'm saying it correctly to say that we could rely upon ARPA funds to impact in a position like this in future years. But really, what I'm trying to put out there, based on what the board said last week, is I think we can make an immediate impact to benefit our public health department generally, but also specifically by expanding the health inspector part-time role to full-time. We do have funds available in the salary line item this year. So the purpose of this memo is somewhat of a Swiss Army knife, meaning it's meant to accomplish a lot of things. First of all, a philosophical approach that I'm trying to bring to the decision-making that I'll rely upon to then make recommendations to you folks, to recognize the board's commitment to public health last week, and to try to make an immediate impact for their benefit. And we can accomplish that separate from the ARPA funds. And then last but not least, Mr. Chairman, it's a mechanism by which you and I can update the Board of Selectmen and the town, and a conversation that we had earlier with Barnstable County regarding those funds as well, which builds off of last week's discussion by the board.
Thank you. Any questions on the memo? Larry?
No, I'm fine with the approach. I think the immediate reaction is right. I think not competing for what we have coming elsewhere is correct. I do caution that as we move forward, we sometimes in the past have taken funds for, you know, a short-term salary increase or personnel increase, for instance, and realized we have to pay, pick that up later on our own budget. So I was only asking, we, we look at all this stuff you're opposing, but look long-term, too, what it's going to cost us.
Thank you, Larry. Julie?
So in terms of the memo, I understand it, but I also wonder, and I agree, why, why put money towards things that we can get in other agencies? But what about the monies, the first money that came in, which was like $600,000, right? So those monies, can any of that be attributed to the costs that, that the Health Department has had to undertake with testing and all that, as almost like reimbursable?
I'm going to defer to the Finance Director on that. So the question was, for any funds that Health Department has presently expended in this fiscal year relative to COVID, can we rely upon ARPA funds to reimburse? If I heard that correctly?
Yeah, that's right. Thanks.
The town had numerous funding sources for, for Health Department and, and the strain on their budget. We had CARES Act funds. They had funding through Barnstable County, and they have FEMA that we've tapped into. They all have their requirements. CARES Act has expired. And so there are expenses that we are planning to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to, to fund through ARPA. And those would be the V and A cost of the expenses for two months that they, that the department incurred, in which they had no budget to support that. But in a general speaking, generally speaking, federal or state grants, the town is required to, the funds can supplement your budget, they can't supplant.
Okay.
So what that means is if you have them budgeted and funded in your budget, you can't then pull those expenses and say, no, we would like to apply them to ARPA.
Okay. Thank you. That's great clarification. So that answers that.
Paul, so Julie?
Yeah.
Mary?
Just, just clarification. Did I understand that you believe there's budget money available now so that we could make that part-time person full-time, assuming that person is willing?
Correct. Because we had a vacancy and we had a temporary person, but haven't had success in filling the part-time role, what's left over in that salary line item will support a salary of full-time because it's prorated for the rest of the fiscal year. And so, again, building off of the, what I felt was a clear directive from the board, and again, completely agree with that directive. This is a request that has come from Health Department, going back to when Megan Eldridge was our Health Director and not our Assistant Town Administrator. So this is something that we've been working with the Health Department on and pushing off for, for a year and a half. And so for me now, there's no better time to demonstrate that commitment, but to also help them. We have the resources, and I think it's the appropriate way to go. And having said that, it's a position that we contemplated bringing to you as a full-time position in fiscal year '23 anyway, because of the urgent need. And this ties back to a message that you're going to hear from, from me and Carol over the coming weeks as we get into the budget overall. And that is, what do we see changing in, in the world, if you will? And we've, it's abundantly clear for us that a full-time health inspector rather than a part-time is not going to be a restful job. They're going to be active, and they're going to be active in the far foreseeable future.
Thank you.
Julie?
Just a follow-up, and maybe this is not the right time to talk about it because it's not in the memo, not on the agenda, but also ARPA funds being used for the Health Department as hazard pay? You know, because we talked about that briefly in the letter that we received from Dr. O'Neill. I'd like to see, they have been on the front lines, similar to police and fire. And so I just think that we should talk about that. That should be something on the agenda.
If I'm.
It's covered under the memo. So Joe, if you want to give an explanation?
Sure. So to that regard, we've had those requests. We've also had those requests through the process of collective bargaining. So what we're doing is we're working with Labor Council to evaluate that, and also working off the recent final rule to see how it actually manifests itself. So it is something that we fully expect to bring before you. It may be in executive session under collective bargaining, because we've had a number of associations ask as their negotiations for that. It's one of those many things that we're going to bring before you. The purpose of the memo is then to also talk about that philosophy. And that philosophy may apply to certain positions. We don't know yet how broadly we can apply that, though. And that's, that's what we're stuck with right now in open session.
Thank you.
Don, I'm not holding off on you. Barry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Just one question related to that. Don't I recall in Carol's memo of last week that that hazard pay was only at a very low wage?
Correct.
So that's, that's in there, too. It can't go to everyone.
Correct. Our understanding, based on the final rule, and understanding the mindset of the federal government, they were looking to make an impact on lower-paid employees. And that, first of all, would be hourly, so it would not be able to go to salaried employees. So then what we have to work with counsel is who would be considered truly hourly versus salary. But those are some of the things we have to work out.
Thank you.
And we do understand the intent was to help the, the lower-paid folks that were in a hazardous situation during a difficult pandemic.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going to assume my role of taking the wings off of butterflies at night. By, and recognizing that the next room over, that I'm married to the Chair of the Board of Health, I still have to ask these questions. Absent a town meeting action, because I wasn't here last week, what is our current staffing plan called for in that office? Because they get to be voted on at a town meeting when you start changing things around.
So I think what your question gets to is, this is a current position. It's a current .5 full-time equivalent. It's not a new position going from part-time to full-time. But this is already within the Health Department roster and has been in the roster for a number of years.
Well, that leads to the second question, then. When you pay someone, it has to be subject to an appropriation somehow. I mean, money in, money out.
Sure. If I could, the immediate reaction is, there's a salary appropriation for that department. There's a salary appropriation for that position. I believe it still comports with Department of Revenue requirements, expanding upon that role in the present year. But I'll defer to our Finance Director if she needs to correct me.
The town of Harwich manages its operating budget based on broad categories. So within the Health Department, there'll be a category of salaries and wages, and that's a total line item. So meaning, if there may be seven line items within that, but the total is what we manage to. We also manage to total expenses by department. So because they were unable to fill the position, the position was just under a .5, or was a .5 FTE, there's funding there for the position from, you know, let's say, February 1st to June 30th. There is sufficient funding. It falls within that category. So there certainly wouldn't be, they wouldn't be coming to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee within the last two months of the fiscal year to ask for a transfer for that.
My final thought is based on something that Larry said, and I may be sleeping in the guest room tonight. But the durability of ARPA funds, we got ourselves in horrible trouble in the past using flush years for free cash to do something. This isn't like an ongoing revenue stream, like property taxes, or, and even income taxes aren't exactly. They fluctuate quite a bit. It's nothing we're doing tonight, but it would be, it would take me an awful lot to get to the point of spending one-time money on continuing obligations anywhere, regardless of what department it's in.
Thank you. I do hear what Don's saying. However, I think we could say public emergency at this point. And I think we're about to have no employees in the Health Department based on Dr. O'Neill's memo and, and conversation about how overwhelmed they are. And I think that it's incumbent upon this board to make that happen. If I'm reading the ARPA funding correctly, we can use that for multiple years. It's not just one year. We're also sitting on county money, which we'll get into very quickly, that conversation that we had today. But we can also put that in for request from the, from the county. I see Elizabeth rearing her ears. She can't hear me. So I think that we could come up with a long-term funding solution, but ultimately, this will have to go. but ultimately this will have to go back to town meeting eventually. And as we talked prior about budgets, it, it's getting tight, but the Board of Health really needs help. And I think that that, that was the message. So, go ahead, Don.
I, I need a, a ruling on part of the chair. We had Clean Waters Board meeting this past week for the county, and the subject of ARPA came up relative to the county and to the towns. You want me to wait until the end of the meeting on Selectmen's reports, or do you want me to?
I think that that will fall into what we're about to talk about, and I think it's covered under the topic tonight. So I don't see why we can't. So I'll turn it over to Joe to talk about the context of today's conversation with our delegate, Elizabeth Harder that's on the line tonight, and the Assistant County Director.
Correct.
And Carol Coppola was in that meeting as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to rely upon our delegate to the Assembly of Delegates to remind me. I believe Vera's last name is Hauruk or Harvick.
You're muted, Elizabeth.
The H is silent.
But as we're waiting for Elizabeth, we did have a great conversation with the, the Assistant County Administrator, who I've heard from in our Cape and Islands meetings. And she's, she's the point person for the county, reaching out to municipalities. So we had a conversation, Carol and I, with our chairman, with our member from the Assembly of Delegates, talking about the ARPA funds used from the county, from the survey. Mr. Chairman, did you want me to get into some of the numbers? Because there is a couple of point of prides, points of pride in there. The survey that was announced at your meeting last week is live and is, is actively being responded to. And it is a point of pride where Vera told us that the Town of Harwich participation rate is second only to Barnstable. And as of today, there were 159 responses out of just over 1,100 from the town. So per capita, our town is very much engaged in that survey. And so that's going to be very helpful. The survey is open until February 4th, and after which time it closes, the deputy or the Assistant County Administrator is going to share those results with Cape and Islands Managers Association, but also with Boards of Selectmen and government officials throughout the, the Cape, and then talk about their process by which Cape Cod towns can seek the funds and all of that. And for that, I would defer to our, our delegate on the Assembly of Delegates.
No, we can't hear her.
Hang on one second, Elizabeth. We can't hear you.
And it's not us in this room because our loop is working, so it's something on Elizabeth's side.
And her mic is green.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Almost. We can hear something.
It's not plugged in.
Well, maybe Joe, maybe you could-
Elizabeth, if you want to mute and unmute again, we did hear you for a second. But it is, it is on your end because our loop is working.
Now?
Yep.
All right.
Oh, no. Don't move anything. When you moved it, we couldn't hear you.
Jesus, Mark.
There we go. We got the best part.
Okay?
Yes.
I'm not touching it again. I'm not moving.
Very good.
Just for the record, the, the Barnstable County Assistant Town Administrator is Vera Hauruk, V A I R A, H A I R U K. I think I spelled the last name right.
You moved it.
Joe, I think we'll just give an overview of what the conversation was about.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, we will try this again because I know it's coming back to us soon. But for now, we're going to have Joe Powers give an overview of the money and the process.
So as we said earlier, Vera's job is to reach out to the towns, have these one-on-one conversations, give us, as she did today, an update of some of the survey results. The survey results talk in percentages of where people see the money going. I will offer some caveat, caveats on that in a moment, insofar as there's one that I think that if people learn more about it, may rise up the charts, and it's the lowest one right now. But they've asked the five questions that are on the survey, such as, where do you think your town prioritizes the money? Where do you think your town should prioritize the money? And then, do you think the, the county should distribute it by population? Or a hybrid or solely by request? I think that was the, the vast majority of it. We then talked about, Vera said she watched your meeting on YouTube after it happened. So she was aware of the conversation last week. And she complimented into the chairman and you folks on the fact that you had a, an in-depth, thorough and helpful conversation on it. And so I told her, she thought that was great. We were going to do it again tonight. So she is very complimentary of the town and the efforts that you folks are giving towards this discussion. She knows that Carol and I are working through Department Heads. And, and really, what we don't know yet is what is going to come of the county's allocation process. We know that they're going to have a portal. That's something that they told us, managers and administrators back in late 2021. And we know that the portal will remain open until November 30th, 2024, if I remember correctly. And that's, so they will, the county will respond to requests once the portal's open, right up until the last possible allocation is available, which is one month before the last allocation can occur, according to the federal government, December 31st, 2024. And then there's an additional two years by which it has to be spent. To steal a little bit of the thunder of the chairman, the chairman emphasized that we in Harwich are aware of a number of needs. Carol and I are coming back to you folks on the original tranche, or tranches, I should say, of the 1.27 that we already have access to. 650 now, 650 coming in June, and then expect to build on that for the county. We had a general conversation about if the county money would be well-spent if we do it on more of a regional basis or something where it can impact upon the greater good. So I know if Elizabeth could talk, she would mention how towns are talking.
Can you hear me? I switched computers.
That worked. Mr. Chairman, can I yield?
You can.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Sorry, I had to switch computers. I'm here. We had a great meeting, I felt. And, and I think, I'm hoping that what came across most to you all is that nothing is set in stone yet. We're still working on it. You know, this is just sort of a feeling out meeting at this point to see what the towns are thinking. And as, as far as the survey, please Harwichians, please, please, fill out the survey and let us know what your priorities are. Because as your elected official, that's what I, that's my job to push those. So.
Thank you, Elizabeth. The, we'll bring this back soon. We're obviously going to get some suggestions from Town Administrator and Finance Director of what we need. I would, I would echo Elizabeth's. It's barnstablecounty.org backslash ARPA. And maybe the Chamber of Commerce could send that out for us, just a suggestion. But the more people we get to fill out this form, which we're already doing great, the more we can all see what the needs of the, the town are. I also think that the board needs to take this up sooner rather than later, and maybe after the suggestions from Finance Committee, but take a position based on that survey of where we are. Whether we think we should get the money and, and control it ourselves or, or go the other route. But I think we should offer a position to the delegates and the commissioners as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe I mentioned to you a few months ago, actually, that Dan Peltier and I had talked relative to the septic loan program and how they were trying to cast about, he called up Chris Senatori to try to figure out how that would work in an environment that had septic, I mean sewer hookups. Some of them very expensive with grinder pumps and such. Off that, we had an opportunity when we were talking in the Clean Waters Board, and I offered a motion to try to ask the county before they disperse the money to individual towns for individual things, to consider the septic loan program, getting some sort of infusion of money, because I pointed out there are often times when people have like five or six or seven years left on their septic loan, and now they're going to have to get another loan on top of it, but they need the liquidity to be able to send the money out. And I can foresee, especially as the, you know, the rest of the Cape winds up having sewer connections, because we're pretty much ahead of a lot of people, that that's going to be a concern about whether the liquidity of the loan program exists enough to be able to handle the load of people coming in and saying, I can't afford this. I got to take a loan out for it.
Thank you, Don. Comments, Mary?
No, I look forward to further discussions.
Julie?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we've talked about it very well and we've done the survey. But I will say, you know, towards the end of the survey, the, the last couple of questions that talk about, you know, population and dispersment of a base amount, it's really difficult to answer. I, I struggle with that, and I said that, because how, how can we really comment on that when we don't even understand what the base may be? So as much as it's important for everybody to take the survey, I feel like the survey could have been, those last few questions were kind of not helpful.
Thank you. Joe?
We, we talked about that generally, and that was one of the concerns that I raised, that, you know, a survey is only, is only as good of an instrument as what you put into it. And the good news is Vera said that they're getting a number of comments, and they, they love that level of engagement and they're reading those. And so they may be able to build off of some of those comments. But I, I want to use that if I could as a segue to the other topics, meaning revenue replacement. In the conversation today, we talked with Elizabeth and Vera, Carol, Mike and I, and I didn't know what revenue replacement was when I first heard of it, and I immediately dismissed it. Because my thought was, well, we didn't really have a negative impact on our revenue, so why would we have to replace it? And that's a very baseline, very much a non-finance person way to review revenue replacement, because that's not what it gets to. I'll, I'll defer to Carol in a future session to explain it. But revenue replacement essentially says that the town is going to rely upon the ARPA funds to replace revenue and use it for general government purposes. Meaning, it would give potentially the Town of Harwich, and we could be talking just now about the 1.2 million that we already have, but it would give us more flexibility in how we use that, rather than simply saying, we want to apply it to infrastructure. And infrastructure, we mean wastewater or septic or broadband or something. So I had raised the question that if people knew more about what the categories got to and what revenue replacement really achieved, I think many of us in government might be more inclined to choose that, and yet it's the only one that is a single-digit response favorably. Every other thing is no less than 21% favorable response. And so, you know, we talked about, is the county going to do any education on that? And, and I think the answer first is, well, the education comes from the final rule. And so we do have some of those materials on our website. But I do think ahead of February 4th, 4th, it may be worth future discussion on what do the questions really mean? And, you know, for the general public, I don't know how you would know, and I don't mean to say that in a disparaging way. I've been in municipal government for 30-something years, and I didn't know what revenue replacement got to. So there is that element of some level of confusion. And so we did talk about, when it comes time for the county to rely upon those results and the towns, I think we need to be a little bit careful because of that, those disconnects, if you will. But I think it's a point very well taken. There's any number of those where you could look at it and say, well, I don't know what the right answer is, and how much time do you got? You know?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe. Julie, anything further?
No, I just, one, one other comment I want to make back to the Health Department, and I say this based on, you know, what I do for a living, other than on this board. Trust me, I wouldn't be able to make a living. Is that I feel that, you know, the Health Department really has been hit in two different ways. You know, they have been broadsided by a pandemic, but in addition to that, by the boom in, in building. And so they have had to try to manage this pandemic and to deal with all the, the elements of that that, that applies to the residents, businesses, all these different pieces that are not in their normal jobs go. I mean, they are. That's why we have a Health Department, but it's not every day that we face this, and now it's been two years. In addition to that, they've got all these processing of applications and septic and test holes and all these things that, I mean, even hiring a full-time inspector is going to be helpful. But I, I can't emphasize enough why I think, you know, we really, whatever happens with this money, somehow we have to be able to help the Health Department because they've bombarded. Never mind the, the public in terms of the, you know, frustration.
Thank you, Julie. Larry?
I certainly agree with that. They need help. Joe, you gave a very complicated answer to that revenue replacement. I found the survey to be somewhat vague, actually, filling out, and I appreciate, maybe comments would help. But I think the dilemma I'm getting into is, if we talk, you know, use of regional funding versus specific funding, I'm not quite sure how to answer that until we have a discussion what we think our priorities are. Because there are clearly items that we could look at and say, we, we need those for the Town of Harwich. We don't need to look at a regional solution. Maybe others, if we're talking wastewater, for instance, maybe some funding going to regional solution makes sense. But I do think, Michael, to your point, we need a good, we need a good discussion led by Joe of what the possibilities are so we can track those ourselves. And then we can, I think we can properly answer that survey and say which, in that particular question, which direction we want to go. Without that, I'm struggling.
Thank you, Larry.
And I'll try to be brief, but I couldn't agree more with what you've said, Larry, in that regard. And that's why for tonight, I wanted to get out first the, the driving philosophy that I have. Every one of those survey questions that's asked at the county level is exactly the questions that Carol and I and Department Heads and then you folks are going to have to answer as well. The categories are all the same. You know, what are we going to use it for in these categories and how are we going to approach it? And so for us, we're first going to save for the Town of Harwich with the Town of Harwich funds. And then, once we do that, we're going to say, for the Town of Harwich, for funds available through the county. But educating you folks and ourselves on what revenue replacement really means is all well and good, and we'll do that over the coming days and weeks. But for me, for tonight, I think it's going to be helpful. I know it's helpful for me, and I think it would be helpful if you generally agree to use some philosophical approach, because we're approached, we're provided with a bucket of money, and it's not a small bucket. That's the good news. The bad news is what we endured to earn that bucket and what we're still enduring. And as I've said, for Carol and I, for this particular conversation, but also our budget for fiscal year 23 and the next five years or so, what are we looking at? The world has changed, and we don't know yet how much, but we can see the areas. We can see it in just what you said with the building boom. What does that mean for population going forward? What does it mean for services? Certainly for the health situation and many other things, including one that we won't get into yet, but how our workforce works now and will work in the future. Because we have to expect that there's going to be something in the 21st century that's going to cause us to retreat mercifully, hopefully not for the length of time we've done thus far, but cold and flu season of a higher nature, whatever the case may be. So. I think the discussion tonight is helpful. I think we still have a lot of learning to do on what- I think we still have a lot of learning to do on what all the categories mean and what the results are, but, um, the encouraging points for me were how well Harwich is responding to the survey, because that tells us how engaged they are. And so I expect that engagement to come to your level when we talk about our funds versus funds from the county.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone in the public? All set? Moving on to discussion, impossible vote of deed for Depot Street property to Harwich Affordable Trust. And what that means is to convey the deed from the Board of Selectmen to the Harwich Housing Trust. And is there an address on here, Joe? 'Cause I'm not seeing it. Well, we can refer to Book 31507, page 293. But it's to convey the deed to the Harwich Trust from the Board of Selectmen. Can I get a motion?
Can you repeat that book? How'd you get that?
Book 31507, page 293.
Mr. Chairman, if it helps, I would also say Assessor's Map 56, parcel P12. Uh, P as in powers.
Fifty-six what?
Uh, Map 56, parcel P12.
Okay. And Mary, I'm gonna just hand you my computer, 'cause I want you to ignore. That's the description of the land. The other one might have been Town Hall, so this is...
So, read that.
Yeah, read this.
Okay.
And it's, "Convey the deed from the Board of Selectmen to the Housing Trust," with that description.
I move that we vote to convey the deed from the Board of Selectmen to the Harwich Affordable Trust for the Depot Street property. Land identified on Assessor's Map 56 as parcel P12, containing one acre more less, described in a judgment in tax lien case dated December 29th, 2006, recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 21728, page 319. See instrument of taking recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 8422, page 322.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Larry?
No.
Julie?
No.
Mary?
No.
Don?
No.
The only question I had, though, Joe, is why does it list the trustees and not just the Harwich Housing Trust on the deed? And does that, um, play foul later when we wanna do something, when these members are no longer sitting on the trust or the Board of Selectmen?
No, this comports with past deeds that have been executed, not only in the town, but throughout the Commonwealth.
Okay.
Um, in past instances. Um, it reflects this moment in time, these boards.
And the new trustees will be able to do what they want.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Update by Town Administrator regarding, nope, that's not it. Discussion impossible, reconsideration for Beachlight LLC DBA Seal Pub, 703 Main Street, 2022, Sunday Entertainment License from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM inside, recorded or live acoustic music. Last week, uh, the board members that were present, Mary online, uh, and Larry here, Julie here, and I here, Don absent, voted four to zero on the indoor entertainment license for Sunday, I believe. Okay, so it was three, it was three to one.
Yeah.
Uh, Mary voted against it. And we voted that under the premise that they had had a previous Sunday entertainment license, and it was confirmed by staff the next morning that they did not, in fact, have a Sunday entertainment license issued to them last year. So, I put it on as a reconsideration. The reason and description that the Seal Pub gave for wanting 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM was, um, because they wanted to cover themselves on everything. We have asked for a legal opinion on whether or not a radio playing in a kitchen and bar area and a television playing requires a entertainment license. We have not received that, um, legal opinion to my knowledge as of this evening.
Correct, and I did speak with Attorney Blake on that matter. Um, he is getting, uh, material together. I made him aware of this action, um, and he'll be able to update us sooner rather than later.
I held this license, um, from the board, um, signing and sending out in anticipation of tonight's meeting and that legal opinion. On the matrix that was provided by Danielle weeks ago, there's nobody else that we've issued a 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM for Sunday on that matrix anywhere. Um, there is one or two more that go to 12:00 AM, but there's none that early, and I know at least Selectman Howell has raised concerns in the past on establishments near churches and what time we let them start. Um, they did express that it was only for, uh, what we've referred to as ambient background music or television, and wanting to cover themselves. So, tonight's action is no action and stay with the vote that we had last week, or a motion to reconsider and a new vote, or no vote until we get the legal opinion. Joe?
I would want, want the board to also consider, however, um, given that this establishment has never had this type of license, it's considered a new license, and there are differences under the statute as you, how, how you would handle a new license, which is what this would be, versus a renewal. And so for that reason, I can speak more to it if you want me to, but I think the prudent course of action would be for one of the members that voted in the affirmative to reconsider it, because I think we have to notice it differently. Um, whether you want them to get it or not, to me, at this point, is immaterial. Because we now know it to be a new license, we need to make sure we follow the appropriate statutory requirements. And we can't do that at present.
So that would be Larry or Julie would have to make the motion to reconsider the January 10th vote for what's listed on the agenda.
I'll, I'll move to reconsider and, uh, the motion.
Need it seconded?
Don?
I wasn't here, can I vote in any direction?
Not on the reconsider, I do not believe, and I don't think we need you to. So, I would, on the air, on the side of caution, and not. But go ahead, Joe.
Correct, however, I do wanna say that under standard parliamentary procedure, reconsideration comes from the prevailing side. However, any member who voted previously can vote on this one, meaning...
Mary can vote in favor.
Mary can vote any way she wants, because it's reconsideration.
Right.
Do you need, is reconsideration seconded, or not?
I will, yes. Um, but Larry, I would only ask you to include in your motion, um, the Sunday entertainment license, 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, inside, recorded live music, as voted by the board on January 10th.
I'll include that in my motion.
And is that in your second, Julie?
Yes.
Okay. Joe, that covers it?
I do have a discussion, because one of the reasons that reconsideration is, I think, uh, part of the discussion, I'm waiting for the legal opinion on this, because part of the discussion is, I, they mentioned last time, and maybe I didn't react, didn't listen as well as I should, but this idea that they're doing something just to cover themselves, I think we need to be careful of that. It could be that it's not required because of the reason that we, that was mentioned. But I'd like to, I don't like that motion, that idea, just to cover yourselves, just find out exactly what's going on.
Larry, I appreciate that, and, and I agree with you, and I, I would just say publicly that I'm, I'm not sure I'm against what it is. I wanna make sure we're doing it right. And when I found out that they didn't have one, they represented that they had it, and it was no change. Staff confirmed that it was, that they didn't have it. Um, so to Joe's point, it is a new license, and I think we should do it right. We're under a lot of scrutiny, and I don't think that there's any sense in keeping things that we were, we voted. And part of it was 'cause it wasn't on the agenda, what last year's license was, but Danielle confirmed Monday morning, well, it wasn't on the license, because they never had it.
And to, to your point, uh, when it's clarified, I most likely will go along with it. I, I'm not, it's, you know, it's good for the business, I'm, I'm for it, I'm, I remain it. But I do want to be sure that we understand it, and I wanna be sure that it's not just to cover themselves. It may not be necessary, based on what you're talking about.
Right. Joe?
Right, and to, so, to the motion that was made in the discussion you're having, um, I would emphasize that this is entirely appropriate, because what you're talking about is you're reconsidering, not that you're looking to change your action, but you've realized new information. Meaning, it was presented as renewal, we now know it to be new, and that's why you're reconsidering. It is not an action to deny. Uh, in fact, quite the contrary. It's an action to make sure it's done properly. And so reconsider, consideration for those purposes, and I, I'm, I'm offering that for it to be added to the record, that the board is considering reconsideration because of new information.
Correct.
Uh, and then last but not least, it may have been noticed as a renewal, and that could, um, damage it, so to speak. So it's a prudent step for all to do this reconsideration. Not as a backdoor way to cancel, rather as a way to do it proper.
Thank you, Joe. So I'm gonna go roll. Mary?
Um, just so I'm clear on what we're doing. By, by voting to reconsider, that means what happened last week gets wiped off, but we're not taking other action tonight.
No.
Okay.
So, roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I'm an aye, and I would imagine abstention. So, four, uh, four zero one, Joe.
So then, if I could, just for the record, so the matter's now been reconsidered, meaning staff will work with the applicant to have it properly brought before you for, for, for future adjudication.
Right. And just, uh, also for the public, uh, and the board, it's looking like the public hearing for their outdoor request will happen on January 30th.
31st?
31st. Whatever that, that meeting is, the last meeting. Um, contracts, Mary?
I move that we vote to approve a contract not to exceed 2.1 million with GHD for Phase 3 wastewater collection system design.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. B?
I move that we vote to approve a con- Contract Amendment Number 2 in the amount of $94,000 with CDM Smith for additional resident project representative oversight related to additional work on Continental and Widah Drives.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Four one, Joe. Town Administrator's report.
Uh, thank you. First of all, it's great to be back in person, um, better than remote. Um, I just wanna inform you that I received, um, a notice from our Director of Planning and Community Development, John Ideman, and, and if, if, I'd like to just read what he's written, um, right now for your benefit. So, John has indicated that, um, since he sent last week's memo about the, um, local planning committee for the local comprehensive plan, he said, "Since I sent the memo last week, we continue to receive, as I suspected we would, statements of, statements of interest. We probably have 12 or 13 now interested. We have a number of excellent candidates. So, so as to try and impanel as many qualified candidates who should show an interest, um, and supplementing what I wrote in my memo, the board could also consider impaneling the entire planning committee of community at-large members, rather than having ex officio members. Uh, of course, any member of the public or board or committee can attend and participate." So, that's the update from the Director of Planning and Community Development. You have, um, a dozen or so individuals interested, so I can work with John and contemplate maybe him coming before you folks in my absence next Monday night on next steps, but it sounds like we've had a late, great, uh, positive response.
So I would ask, uh, to agenda that for next week. Um, and that would include voting to extend the period of time and just a complete overview. 'Cause I know the original request that I read, the email Joe, Joe said to consider up, uh, adding a couple of weeks, 'cause it's over on February 4th.
Will do.
Okay, anything else for the Town Administrator's report?
That's it, thank you.
Selectmen's report, Don?
Have nothing.
Mary?
Nothing.
Julie?
Nothing.
Larry?
None.
Motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?